You're all set? Are you all set too? All right, we'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the, actually, is this considered a special meeting because of the rescheduling? No. So it is a regular meeting of the Killenley and the Wetlands and Water Course Commission. And you want to do the roll call since Rena's not here?
Sure. Sandy Eggers.
Here.
Chris McDonald.
Here.
Rodney Golden.
Here.
And we have absent with no obfuscation, Karina Tori and Paul Archer.
All right, so they both did, it's nice that they let you know too, so that we made sure we all got here. Okay, first item would be adoption of the minutes of the August 7, 2023 regular meeting. Do you guys have a chance to look at those?
Yes, motion to adopt as presented.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt the minutes of the Monday, August 7, 2023 meeting as they were presented. Any changes or deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, citizens' participation, it does not look like anyone's here for that this evening. So we'll move right on to unfinished business, the first being and the only being application 23-1569 of Canterbury Holdings for construction of 32 residential units, there are 16 duplexes at 25 Colonial Drive. And you want to start?
Sure. So last time where we left off, this originally came in as authorized agent application. We had some questions in regards to the existing drainage basin, whether or not had been thoroughly checked for wetlands. The applicant did provide a letter that's in your packet stating that there are in fact no wetlands in that area, nor is there any on the proposed site. There is some stuff offsite. The applicant's been working with staff, this has changed kind of significantly in terms of the overall layout, but to the betterment, there's less stormwater, they're using only the existing basin, trying to improve the existing basin, there's no proposed new basin. And there was comments from the assistant town engineer that just came in kind of late, those comments just were just given over to the applicant, so I'm not expecting any of those to be addressed. However, reading through the comments, they have no real effect on wetlands, they are all little detail items relating to specking of some pipes and requesting additional parking for like guest parking.
Yeah, I think our concern was with that existing stormwater basin.
So I don't think, I don't think there's really any issue now.
No, it's in our Upland.
We wanted to know.
Yeah, it's in our Upland review, but yeah. I think we're satisfied with that letter that was provided.
Did you think of anything else, Chris? I think that was the only thing.
Yes, that was the only thing we talked about.
We just weren't sure, so we wanted you to make sure you got everything in order. So?
Motion to approve application 23-1569 of Canterbury Holdings.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve application 23-1569 of Canterbury Holdings as it is presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I made you come for that, but last month we weren't sure.
Only 10 minutes away. No problem. Good seeing you, Robbie.
Yeah, good to see you both, take care.
We'll see you thinking about.
Keep passing it down here somewhere. All right, then we have three items of new business. Okay, first one's 23-1571 of Michael Chabanas for construction of a single-family home to 54 Wheatley Street.
So the address might sound familiar, but the name is different. There was previously an approval for this site where they would utilize both public water and public sewer system. Unfortunately, due to the moratorium on Route 12 and the actual logistics of connecting in for the city sewer, private septic system, it seems more appropriate, but the water is doable. So the modification that, well, it's a whole new application due to the time and new applicant. But the modification is for a very modest small house with a small two-bedroom system and using public utilities. It's all within Upland Review, it's a very small, kind of unique site, it's got a brook that runs through a portion of the property.
Is that like at the end of the road?
Because that's where the brook is. Yeah, it's at a not-developed section of the road, there's an existing wetlands crossing, there's nothing really involved there. The, there's another house on this section as well too, but the town has a full 50-foot easement, it's just not a paved section.
Right. So do they have the letter from the?
Health Department.
Health Department.
So they have started going through all the health department stuff, I believe we have that actually.
Because if they're going for a two-bedroom system, that's really.
Oh, it's very modest.
That's a special circumstance anyway.
Yes, yeah, normally you don't see that. Although on some of these lots, I've been seeing some of the twos and even the ones, you know, on some of them, they were very unique.
I'm surprised they're accepting that, they'd always wanted.
Three-bedroom.
Three-bedroom regardless of what kind of facility was going in.
Now, I believe we had gotten a copy of their application, it's not the full approval, but that the system would be acceptable for them.
Their usual.
Yeah, their usual, like pending town approval and everything like that. But I had that with our ZBA application, so they also had to get a variance for this application. I can bring it up on the screen, I do have hard copies if you want to see it.
Yeah, might as well.
The other application went so quickly, I feel like Bob Soil Guy's gonna jump in and just start talking about a different project.
All right, let us all gather about again.
It might be easier to look at the paper copy, I'll try to zoom in here, but. So you'll see what's identified on the plan is an existing house that abuts Route 12, and then the subject property which is behind it, that links up to Wheatley Street. And that's where their frontage is counted. They ended up getting a variance for the front setback off of Wheatley Street. And the, is it the Davil Brook? Or Davis Brook? Davis Brook runs through the southern portion of this property, and that's the only area where there is wetlands. They're able to, or as proposed, put in the driveway and the proposed two-bedroom house with a one-car attached garage and the small two-bedroom system. One thing to note is the proposed application is for a house that is slab-on-grade, you know, with frost walls and everything like that. They are concerned about the proximity to the brook, they don't want to, going any deeper than that is just begging to have water issues, so.
That brook, that brook doesn't carry water all year round though, does it? I've seen that dry out.
I've seen it dry out too. I think it's heavily influenced by runoff from 395.
That's, that's what I thought, okay. I guess it's a wetland in the strictest definition of it.
Yes, yes, yeah, it did test, you know, as wetlands. But, so this came in as a full application, I think partly because it is, it doesn't meet the normal separation distances that we would normally do for a authorized agent application, but it is the purview of the commission. If you guys want to just go to next month, you could kick it to staff, that's our normal procedure, so.
Is this, this is a lot of record, right?
This is a lot of record, yep. And it had the previous approvals, it's just with Route 12 being repaved and the depth of that sewer, it's just not realistic.
Right.
Norm would know the details, but I think we were talking like 20-plus feet down, it was, it was quite deep.
To get the sewer there?
Yeah, it was really deep at that section.
Wow.
Doesn't look like they could have done many of their options on a lot of record.
No.
They're keeping it as minimal as possible.
Yeah, there's also, there's an ordinance in regards to the right-of-way with the sewer lines, the wastewater authority frowns on that, they want it on owned property, they don't like stub-offs or anything like that connecting up to it. So I think one of the old approvals showed a stub-off, which was in conflict to a different review with the town, so.
Do you want it to come back next month or?
I don't, I don't see why not, there's not much we can do here.
So you want them to do it as an agent approval if it goes?
Like I said, there's not a lot, whole lot of room here to.
Do anything else?
No. So, I mean, what's, what's really the point to have them?
They're not exactly asking for a lot.
Yeah, no, no, they, like Sandy said, I mean, they are keeping it very minimal anyway, so. I, I mean, really, what's the point of them coming back in for this?
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to grant the town staff the ability to act as the authorized agent for application 23-1571 as soon as you feel everything is appropriately in order, right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yeah, because that way you got to make sure that you really do have the letter from the health department, things of that nature.
Yeah, I'll confirm that we have everything that's good on that one.
Yeah, they couldn't have, unless they pitched a tent, they couldn't have cut it back much more.
Not really.
So the next one, and I'm gonna, so don't mix up my files too much here.
That's application 23-1572 of Breton Page Bissinette for a single-family home 101 Mason Hill Road. Now, is that coming in from the Blueville side or the Terry Chamber side, 101?
Blueville side.
Okay, the C pill.
Yep.
Okay.
I will give you the entire folder and I'll bring that one up as well. This one's a rear lot that's taking advantage of a right-of-way through essentially a farm field, small, very small farm field. Let's see if I can bring this up for us.
I don't know, doesn't look like there's any anywhere, is there? There's no frontage at all.
No, this is a rear lot, yeah. It's serviced by a 50-foot right-of-way only. And it does call for some drainage improvements, some drainage improvements, you can see at the entrance where there's some improvements to, I guess this would be the north? The northeast side of the driveway, which does abut a wetland, so they're kind of coming in trying to skirt the edge of the wetland. And it's probably one of the closest areas, there is also some wetlands as the driveway turns, just past the turn, again to the east of the site. Where the real, in terms of separation distances and everything like that, comes into play is you have a septic system that's being proposed, including the reserve area, all within the 100 feet, the majority of it within the 100-foot radius of the edge of the wetland. The reserve's actually closer, and I believe the reason for that is a ledge outcrop that's identified on the plan, they're trying to find a location.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a big chunk of it there.
Yep. I believe this is a three-bedroom house, but this one's a little bit more complicated, it could be a viable one if you wanted to do a site, site walk for, we still have good weather right now. Otherwise, staff could try to do one prior to the next meeting. This is not one I have, I have not been out to this one yet, we just received this application.
You haven't been out here?
I have not been out here yet, I would believe this would.
Well, right. Yeah, we'll plan something and we'll see what's up with the next one and then schedule something before the end of the meeting.
Okay, so that would be a motion to receive and schedule a site walk and we'll.
No public hearing.
Without a public hearing.
Is that a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table application 23-1572 with no public hearing and a site work, walk prior to the October meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Hey, Jason.
We're almost done.
We're burning through them. Most of them are new applications here.
When are we gonna find a day when it's not raining to go out there?
I know, yeah, that's the question.
In the short term, not too good. We could do, if you'd like, what we've done in most recent years, although it is getting dark sooner, to do right before the meeting.
Oh, you'll miss me, I'll be at Freiburg with cattle. That's all right, because I won't be here for October anyhow.
Traditionally, staff tries to do one a little bit earlier than that to get any, anything out of the way, but if you wanted to schedule like a 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer to do them like, I don't prefer to do them right before.
The meeting?
That's just my preference.
It might just prolong it.
Since I'm running the meeting next week.
Okay.
That's right, that's yours. Take charge, go for it. And the next one, we're.
What about the 25th, which would be two weeks from now? September 25th?
Uh, that works.
What kind of time are you thinking? I'm not sure you want to go much past 5:00 because of it.
5:00 would be, I think 5:00 would be it.
Yeah. All right, so we'll plan on that, and the next, where's the next application? It doesn't actually have an address.
That's an error on the.
I bet it does have an address.
I would hope so.
Separate harbor, 25th at 5:00 PM?
Yeah.
The next application is 34 North Frontage, which is a, I'm trying to make sure I have. Which isn't that far.
At the trailer park and stuff?
Yeah, it's near.
Got all the big houses in the trailer park?
In the trailer park.
One or the other?
There is another one, I want to say it's 36, just in Lot 52 on the plan, that recently got constructed, that had a different wetlands approval. Here it is. So this is an old subdivision where the previous approvals have expired due to time. The other applicant had come in, it's a shared driveway, it shaded pretty heavily there.
For quite recently.
Yeah. Being a shared driveway, I think the other application actually dealt with the crossing itself, and that crossing's already established with the other house. This is just everything within Upland Review.
Okay, actually, I don't think we actually started it. So this item's application 23-1573 of Edward and Lynn Martins for a single-family home at 34 North Frontage, just so we have that for the record. Because we started talking about the address and then got lost in that. Okay. So it's 5:01.
And one potentially confusing aspect to this one, it's an item I'm gonna check with our assessor's office, 34 North Frontage, there are two addresses that come up as 34 North Frontage, there are two of them. One of them is a parcel that was cut off from the same subdivision that is owned by Wyndham Land Trust. This is not the property owned by Wyndham Land Trust, this is a different one. So the address might change before the meeting, but better now than when the house is built.
So the other one that we just did was on 52, so that was a lot of the crossing?
Yes.
Yep.
That was most of it.
So the worst of the work was already dealt with?
Yep, this is just a septic system that's within that 100-foot range, and so is the well.
Yep. You guys want to go out since you're out anyhow or not? Doesn't look like there's too much other than the crossing.
Yeah, there's not much there.
No.
Staff's familiar with the site, having been to the other one during construction.
So is that a motion to table it for next month?
Yeah, I don't see any, any reason to go on there.
First I work? All right, so that's a motion, no site walk or public hearing?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table action until next month for application 23-1573 with no site walk and no public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. We may not have had a lot of people tonight, but this is like the quickest, shortest, well, it wasn't really. Yeah, the first one was, it came in as last month as possible.
Yes.
Agent approval, but until we looked, we didn't know. All right, any correspondence?
There's no other correspondence, I have no authorized agent applications, I didn't give a dedicated monthly zoning or wetlands report, but if anyone has any questions about a particular project or status on anyone, feel free. Other than that, we do have a town council liaison here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we have Jason here, and also too, maybe you should bring up the fact that you realize that we have to, that you have to deal with the bylaws.
Oh, yeah, actually, that's, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah.
So our bylaws are due for an update. Traditionally, we do our organizational meeting in December, the last time the bylaws had been updated was in the 1980s, so 1984. Our quorum has since changed, some of the terminology has changed. So staff's gonna work to put something together, being that we're not gonna be looking at a full slate of everyone next month, it might be the December meeting where we do the organizational, but staff's gonna try to prepare the language prior to.
For review, at least for.
For review. There is at least one property that we do have an active cease and desist for wetlands that's on the record for Mashentuck.
Yep.
That particular property, the owner had been working with staff, the property is listed for sale now.
Yes.
It's not considered extinguished, I've already spoken to a buyer's attorney and given him all the information, and we've talked about what staff would be expecting if they are looking to purchase and take over the responsibility or however that looks to shake out, what we expect to be done. So I also met with the potential buyer who went through all the stuff and I think had a good understanding of what would be involved with the cleanup, so.
Yeah, that, that's important.
At least they realized that they had to.
So what staff did on, on that particular one, and a lot of times I try to hold off on recording cease and desists or corrective orders on the land record with the town clerk, partly because we try to work foremost with the individual as best as possible. When we see a property get listed though, and, and when we have a show cause, actually render a decision, we do put that on the land record, so it will come up in the title search.
Good.
So it worked, we had people call up and ask about what they found while doing cursory title search.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right, Jason, glad you made it.
Yeah, me too, I apologize for not being here at the beginning of the meeting.
You didn't miss very much.
Had a long day at work today. So I will go back, because I know I wasn't here last month, so back in, where are we? So we'll go back to our regular meeting in July. We first started looking into, actually, we had up a authorization of a purchase and sale agreement to sell 125. Okay, all right. 125 Alexander Parkway to NE Edge LLC for the data center. We also reviewed the audit reports for the town, everything looked good on those, and we also authorized the, well, actually came in September, or excuse me, August, but July we set the public hearing and special town meeting to authorize a transfer of 746,000 of the surplus turned back from the Board of Ed into the unexpended education funds account. And then we set a public hearing for the ordinance amending Chapter 7 to implement revisions required by FEMA for the flood insurance. All of those, when they did go to public hearing and town meeting, did pass. The purchase agreement for 125 Alexander Lake Parkway, the transfer of 746,000 into the unexpended education funds, and the ordinance amending Chapter 7 for the flood insurance program. Moving forward, where are we? So those things did, did pass, and that was all in August. The other thing that came up was in August, we set tomorrow for a public hearing on our proposed ordinance to authorize the conveyance of an access and utility easement to CPD Killenley LLC at 580 Hartford Pike. If you're not aware of what that project is, there's developer looking to put in a plaza and would require a easement from, through Owen Bell Park, like if you come off Town Farm Road.
Yeah, explain it to us, because what you hear is probably not what's going on right now.
There's, there's a lot of misinformation out there, I've done what I can. It's, we're not selling the property, we're selling an easement.
Oh, that's not what you hear.
Yep, and the other thing, and I, I talked to Jonathan about it over the weekend, is we do have the, of these parcels where this development would be put, the town has, and Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong on this, the town has drainage from Owen Bell Park that runs through those parcels that we don't have an easement on. Part of this, and that's one thing that wasn't even considered, when town staff valued the amount of the easement, is the developer is going to grant us an easement on their property for our drainage. So then we actually have an easement for the drainage that exists on the property that we don't own.
Now, is it a utilities easement or what? Because as I said, all you hear is.
Okay, so part of it, and actually Jonathan just pulled it up right now. Part of it is utility easement, but part of it is actually access to the back of their parking lot. So what's proposed is when you first turn off Town Farm Road and turn into Owen Bell Park where the two parking lots are, like if you're turning towards Jewett City Savings Bank, you've got the parking lot closer to 101, and then you've got the parking lot where the skate park is. In between there, currently there is a dumpster straight across, there's a couple parking spots and a dumpster. The easement would basically go through there, so it would come in, I don't know if you can really tell where the parking lots are in that picture. Okay, so right at, that would be the entrance to one parking lot, the other one would be down below. Now there would be, and Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, there would be four stop signs there, there would be stop signs from each location. Right now, there are no stop signs whatsoever once you turn in, whether you go into either parking lot. There would also be sidewalks, is it on one side or both sides of that easement?
Sidewalk's on one side, on the east side.
Yep.
Closest to the park.
And then didn't they agree to add another one going into?
Yep.
The skate park area?
Yeah, we saw kind of like a natural cut-through with the skate park where we figured people are gonna just wear a path, so they also are showing a sidewalk there.
And then they, that wouldn't be the only entrance, there would also be two other entrances into their. And then they, that wouldn't be the only entrance. There would also be two other entrances into their parcel, right on 101. One right there, one right there. The one furthest to the east would be almost across from where the entrance is for the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza.
That's correct.
I believe it would be just west of the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza entrance.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's.
And, and one of them's just an exit only.
Yes.
That's shown there.
Yep.
So the, one of the goals with the proposed design, which, to be clear for anyone who's listening, this is not subject to wetlands approval. This is just kind of filling you guys in. There's no sidewalks on that side of 101. So what the developer is attempting to establish with the proposed easement is a pedestrian-friendly corridor that connects up existing parking, existing sidewalks, puts in some pedestrian crossings, adds in additional signage for, for stop signs. It narrows an entrance into the park to also help funnel traffic and creates sidewalk all the way to the proposed development.
Has, has DOT reviewed this?
So DOT, for the last five or six years, mainly since the beginning of COVID, has been, most proposed projects, they don't want to see them unless they have town approval.
Really?
They've been, they pushed most of them off, so.
They always want the same first.
They would rather that the town first weigh in, then DOT render a decision. And if that decision alters the plan, then the town can look at that, town staff or whatever effective boards and commissions. Versus the state approving something just for the town to say no. So regardless of the easement, which is what Jason was talking about, this is still gonna go in front of planning and zoning on the 18th at their regular meeting. But the public hearing on the easement, the potential sale of those development rights and, and utility easement will be on the 12th tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yep. So if for some reason that didn't move forward, I would suspect that the developer would show an altered plan without that entrance. And looking at what currently happens with pedestrian traffic, I think we would just have people cutting through property lines if the development was proposed. So just trying to make the best of it, at least from the town perspective. Or I'm speaking at least for myself.
And that's about all I have.
Anything else that you have coming up shortly for us or anything that you're aware of?
Well, so with that data sale, data center, when there's an application ultimately, although it is heavily buffered by conservation property and because of slopes, existing conservation easements that we have, there's also potential for an expansion of some conservation. I suspect that will go through wetlands, but it might be at the very edge of a 200-foot review area. That being said, there's gonna be a significant amount of stormwater, and they're gonna have to address that, I would assume, with galleys and whatnot. But we don't have an application yet, but I'm sure at some point that will be coming forward. There is a, we just received an application for another subdivision off of Ware Road. There doesn't appear to be any activity within 200 feet of any wetlands.
How large a subdivision is that one?
I misspoke, not planned residential development. So it's small houses, like 1,000 square foot, 1,200 square foot. I believe they're proposing adding 15 of those off Ware, Ware Road. So that just got received by our office, so if anyone was interested, they could come in and look at the application. But that will just be received by planning and zoning this coming month and scheduled for a hearing.
I thought there was wetlands all along Ware Road.
There is some drainage on the other side of the road, but where they are entering is off of, not off, there is an entrance off Ware Road, existing, existing house, everything. They're coming in off of, is that Pleasant or? No. They're coming off an adjacent road that's slipping my mind right now. And I believe they have an intent to purchase on an abutting property to get, get that easement.
That would make sense, 'cause otherwise it's wet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is all uphill. It's on the high side. It's probably one of the only areas that.
That doesn't have.
Doesn't have wetlands. There, but downhill, but I think all outside that 200 feet. So we'll verify. We just received it today.
I think that's it then. And once again, thank you for changing the quorum, or we would have been in trouble tonight, too. You know what it is, it's not the normal first Monday because of the holiday.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect.